Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, how are you?
I'm great. How are you today?
Good.
Good.
Reverend Mac, do you want to call us to order?
Yes.
Right.
To. Yes, yes, everyone, I can't, I want to see you and Dr. French, Lauren and Dr. French and anyone else?
No, most, I think Kate's gonna try and join via Zoom. Unfortunately, Ms. Waters and Ms. Green are unable to make it. And I haven't heard from Dr. Fraser, but I will text her.
Oh, she says she's not coming.
Oh, she's not coming. So, small group today, but it's just a working session. We don't have to approve everything. We're just gonna be working through the goals and the guardrails so we can provide an update for the board prior to the board meeting, or the committee of the whole meeting.
No.
A board meeting on the 24th.
Okay. I will, I will call this work session. I want to learn, I will turn it over to you, allow you to, to drive it from there.
Wonderful. Thank you, Reverend Mac. Cindy, I'm actually gonna turn it over to you as we go through the goals and the guardrails and make tweaks along the way.
Sure. Okay, so I believe you have all been given the information from Superintendent Kennedy regarding the goals and the guardrails, the interim goals and interim guardrails that he and his team have been working on developing. I think what the best route for going through this would be, would be to just go one by one, just take one goal at a time. And if Superintendent Kennedy, if you can describe how those interim goals are correlating with that, that particular goal, and then allow the board members to ask any questions regarding your baseline targets, regarding how that information correlates, whatever, whatever that, that, those questions are, that helps the board understand whether or not the goal is written in such a way to convey the, the vision that they intended for it, to convey. Does that, does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so Superintendent Kennedy, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you very much. So, um. So we are ready to present to the board, as Cindy indicated, the, the work that the staff has been working on last couple, at least two weeks, probably three weeks, to come up with the interim goals and, and guard, interim guardrails based on the goals and the guardrails that were produced by the, by the board. So, go to the next slide, please. So, um. Yes, they're moving over to the next slide. So, the first several slides here is just to reiterate why it is that it's important to have these goals in the, in the guardrails and the interim guardrails and interim goals. And so, the first set of slides, we'll look at some of the data that's been presented to the board over the summer, even going back into the spring, that was present, data that was presented to the public, which the public gave you all, board members, our feedback on what, what they thought we should focus on as, as a vision around academic achievement. And so, just want to reiterate the, the why, the why, why we're doing this. So, we, we, we want to ensure as, as an organization, that when all of our children, when all of our students graduate from, from high school, that they are ready for college career and full citizenship upon graduation. And the way we're gonna focus on this as we work through all of the goals over the next few years, is to look at rigorous grade level instruction, high quality teachers and leaders, and, and support services or wraparound services for students that, that need that. And so, we have this vision about, that by 2027, the spring of 2027, all students will be able to read on grade level by the fifth grade. Next slide, please. So, this begins about three slides of, three or four slides of data. It's not necessary for you to be able to read the, the numbers on this line graph, but just let these, these lines represent different racial groups, looking at percent of students reading on grade level from 2006 up to 2022 this past spring. And it shows the top line there are white students. You can see, well, you can't see the number perhaps, but that line's at the top, there's seventy, seventy, seventy-seven percent of our students in 2022, of white students read on grade level. And then you come down to the bottom of the slide, and you see the two lines at the bottom, the first one is green, that represents the Hispanic students, and over that same time period, in the bottom line, the blue line represents African-American students. So, you can see that's a huge achievement gap. And versus with African-American blue line, it shows that in 2022, we had twenty-three, twenty-three percent of our African-American students of grades two through eight, were reading on grade level. So, twenty-three percent are reading on grade level. So, that means seventy-seven, seventy-seven percent reading below grade level. So, it, so the history, the data is pretty compelling in terms of the, the, the achievement gaps and the persistence, the persistence over time of those, those gaps.
Yes, good question. So, it says on the 2022 day, it says actual, the previous years, it's projected from the NWE analysis. Is that based on RSC Ready standards that they did that projection?
So, over this time period of, from 2006 to 2022, the state of South Carolina has had a, a, a number, I don't know what that number is, but more than one state assessment.
Right. Okay.
And so, what, what we asked the NWA folks to do, which are the folks that, that administer the measure of academic progress assessment map that we've been, we, the district has been using since 2005, I believe, when we first purchased that, is that we asked the, the NWA, and they have done this with other districts, to take a look at their map data for, for any year, and we asked for each year for going back to 2006. And the part of the, the program of that software, the NWA, who's the company that owns MAP, the, the part of that programming, the software can, can predict, predict once a student takes the map assessment, I think it's in the wintertime, can't remember if it's winter or the, of spring, but they take the assessment, the map assessment, and NWA can take that assessment and predict where the, the actual student achievement would be done on the state test. And so, what they did, they, they, they did that type of analysis for each year going back to 2006. The reason why they had, we had to do it that way is because, again, there's multiple, multiple assessments that the state has done over the years. So, we wanted to have some consistency on how the data was calculated. And then, the last year, in 2022, this is actual data versus projected, as you indicated.
Okay, so is that, in that case, I'm a little concerned about comparing it to the, for instance, to the year previous. So, if, if it were projected data, would it look a little different?
Slightly. The, the point, the point being here, what have you measured this, how have you go out and do the analysis going back historically? You're gonna see these types of gaps.
Right.
So, that, so that's the point of, of, of the graph, is not to get into, to, for, for us to say, now, this, this particular year, it was absolutely accurate. Okay? And so, so it's two purposes here. One is to show, again, what I just said, the, the, well, three things, the gap, the current gap, two, the persistency of the gaps over, of the gaps over years, over the years, and three, over here at the middle here, 2012, 2012, but you can see in all racial groups were increasing from 2006 up to 2012, and then there was a drop after that. And so, you know, what, what was going on that allowed that increase, and then what happened that, that resulted in the decrease, and the decrease in the sort of like, the flat line going, going over and out of, over a number of years. Okay? All right, next slide, please. And, and, and by the way, so by the way, up here says NWA Analysis of Measures of Academic Progress. So, MAP, so in this presentation, there would be a number of acronyms like MAP, I Ready, MYD, those types of educational terminology. There's an appendix in the board docs. It's, we call it the metric definition that actually describes what each of those, those measures are in, in, in those acronyms. So, sticking, so, so what you'll see, I mean, I know the board knows this, but anyone that may be listening, the first goal that we're gonna work on is African-American and Hispanic students reading on grade level by grade five. Here's why. So, if you take a look at this slide here, during that same time period that I just talked about from 2006 to 2022, for fifth grade African-American students, the average percentage of African-American students over that time period each year that read below grade level is eighty-two percent. The number, the average number is 1,116 students. So, eighty-two percent are eight out of, out of ten students leave, have left, consistently, consistently left elementary school here in Charleston County School District, and matriculated into, excuse me, secondary schools, not prepared to learn at the secondary level. And that's played, that plays out in this next slide, next slide, please. So, this is the, our school districts, twenty, 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 twenty-one, four-year graduating class, college and career readiness. Now, in the table, which I'm not gonna go through, it lists all of the state indicators when the student would be deemed to be college and career ready. And we have it broken out by, by racial groups here in this district, poverty, and, and, and at the state level. So, I won't go through the details of the table. But what I do want to point out, at the bottom, the block at the bottom, where it says the 2020, 21 college and career readiness rate for CCSD is sixty-seven point seven percent. Now, this is as of June of 2021, which this data is based on. We're just getting to June of 2022, so I haven't updated this. But, but in June of 2021, the graduating class of that, only sixty-seven point seven percent were college and career ready. And if you look at the, the number, the percentage of African-American students, the percentage that was career ready was forty-two percent, you know, forty-one point nine percent of the graduating class. And it's not the graduating class, by the way, it's the, it's this cohort. So, if a, a group of a hundred students start the ninth grade together as a cohort, you know, some, some percentage of those students are going to graduate, let's say it's eighty percent, I, I don't know what it is, it says eighty percent. And then some are going to drop out. So, a, a child can start, a student can start in the ninth grade and drop out in the eleventh grade and never get to that graduation point, but they're still counted in this college and career readiness standpoint. And so, for Hispanic students during that same time period that, the graduation in 2021, it was almost fifty percent that were students that were college and career ready.
Is one of these assessments something that all students who are enrolled take in eleventh grade?
Well, no, no, some of these indicators here.
Yeah.
Well, no, not necessarily. I mean, I mean, obviously, all students don't take ACT, nor SAT.
Right, but I thought there was maybe one of them that all students take.
Not necessarily.
But, but the work keys.
I, I, so.
So, so.
Let me get clarification.
Mr. Kennedy, can you hear me, Mr. Kennedy?
I can, please.
Hey, this is Anita. Um, I thank you all for, for your work around this, and it's a really good question. I, I think I might be able to offer a little clarification there, Mr. Kennedy.
Please.
Dr. French, kids in the eleventh grade do take this assessment, and as you, but as you know, not all kids score at the level that would be commensurate with college and career readiness, so they are able to retake that in, in their senior year. Does that, does that help?
Okay, yes. So, anyone who's enrolled would take the career readiness assessment work keys, but there's also students who may have dropped out that would be included in the total, that this percentage is based off of. Okay, thank you.
And we, and we, we're not, really not sure, Dr. French, what the assessment will be this year. As you know, there's been some transition between assessments at the state level on the college readiness assessment. And so, what, what we're able to, to, to confirm right now on, on this piece is, is somewhat questionable.
Okay. Is this gonna require revamping of our guidance counselors?
Yes, we're gonna get into that.
Okay.
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 That, that's part of the strategies, but we'll talk a little bit briefly the day about strategies. Now, we're not getting into a whole lot of strategy because it doesn't have the purpose of the meeting.
Yes.
Uh, but, uh, so, so, um, so some, some of the strategies that we are putting in place will, will entail, well, changes in adult behavior.
It's just scary percentages across the board.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so, this is a, this is a follow-on on, on just the preceding slide. So, I said that forty-two percent of African-American students that graduated in twenty, in the cohort in 2021, read on, I mean, were college, college and career ready. That means the inverse of that, fifty-eight percent, almost six out of every ten students that graduated, six out of ten out of the cohort were not college and career ready. That's a, that's a, that's a troubling number. And same thing with Hispanics, so half of, you know, five out of every ten are not, not prepared for post, post K-12. Next slide, please. Now, we're getting to, so that's, that, that's some of the, where I, I consider the compelling reasons why we need to be doing this. And if, so, I only presented data on, here today on literacy and college and career readiness in very high level. And, and so, I was just a state, though, although I don't have data here that looks at math, but if you were to take, if I were to show you, and I think I have, if I were to show you that the historical line graph of, of math, excuse me, not math, mathematics, you would see, you would see the same pattern. You would see the same gaps, you would see the same growth from 2006 to 2012, you would see the drop-off, and then you would see that consistent stat, a status quo after 2012. All right, so then, goal one, the percentage of that black slash African-American and Hispanic fifth grade students reading on grade level will increase from twenty-five point five percent in July of 2022. So, that's what it is right now. So, that's our baseline starting point to sixty point seven percent in, over this time period that we measured this by, in 2027, by the state English Language Arts Assessment, annual assessment. And, and so, there's, there's, there's a way that we, we, we arrived and derived that sixty point seven percent. And by the way, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty aggressive goal. And, you know, we'll, we'll lay out what, what those, those, I'll just take a look at the next slide, please.
That's very clear that you all put in a lot of hard work.
And so, so each goal then has an interim, a set of interim goals that are predictors of whether or not this district's on track to, to maintain, to reach the, the overall goal. And so, these interim goals then are, need to predict, and we need, we staff need to come to the board on what of that, we, recurring schedule is to show you all how, where we are on this, on these interim measures. So, the first one, sticking with the African-American Hispanic students. So, we, so the goal is, is fifth grade, and so, we're gonna do a check at the third grade, the third grade students. And so, I'm, I'm sorry, I made a little note to myself. But anyway, third grade students meeting ELA growth, growth targets, growth targets. So, this is not in the year, this is looking at, on our interim assessments. And as you, as you know, we are switching for, for most of our students from, at least for all, most of our students in elementary school from MAP to I Ready. And so, we don't have the, a baseline for I Ready yet, and therefore, we won't, and we will not have that baseline until assessments in the spring, which is a spring, it's coming spring, April 2023. So, then, whatever those, whatever that, those numbers are then, then we would have that as a, as a baseline and move forward and, and measure from, based on I Ready. Again, I Ready is, 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 can be used as a predictor how students are going to perform on the, on the, on the state assessment. So, presumably, if we, if we meet this goal here, this interim goal, that means that more, more of our kids will be on track, will be on grade level by the state, state measures in the fifth grade.
I mean, for me personally, this goal is very sound, the interim goal is in place, your childhood assessment along with that third grade piece to make that fifth grade goal achievable. I, I have no issues or have any recommended tweaks for this goal or interim goal.
All right. Obviously, I can move on to the next goal.
Well, I do want to ask one quick question. When you say a percentage of kindergarteners in this group are at low risk, are you talking about at the end of kindergarten?
Um.
Or the beginning?
I don't, I don't know when, so, 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 so the assessment has to be taken more than once a year. So, I'm not sure if this is the end of the year or the beginning of the year. We can get.
And the reason I'm asking is, I just don't know how much leverage you have on whether students are low risk when they come into the system, if they didn't access our early childhood development, for instance.
So, I mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, strategies. So, one, so, so one of our strategies that's being developed is to, is to get more of our students, our pre-K students into high-quality pre-K classes. And so, so we know, I know, because principals told me, their elementary school principals, that when the students come into kindergarten, they, they are not prepared, they, they are high-risk, then it's, it's become extremely difficult, in some cases impossible, to catch them up. In that, we need to be able to bring them, be able to bring more and more kids into kindergarten, prepared. And so, we have, we, we have, we have parents that have students, kids, that's, that's children on waiting list to get into our, to our, our programs. And so, one of the ways we're addressing that is that we have been more thoughtful, more aggressive, and try, and more creative on how do we create more classroom space facilities right now versus waiting until we build new schools. And so, for instance, I think you all are aware that we, we, it looks like we're gonna be able to get two additional pre-K classes in, in Mid and Hughes. We already have one solidified, and we're waiting to work, sort of like the facility space where exit door or whatever, we have to, have to, have to do with, with the state requirements. But we're close to that. So, that would be another sixteen students, now, you know, young people, six, you know, six months up to four, four years old. We have, we're gonna do this Early Childhood Summit next month, November 30th. We, we have a team on that. There's, there's this vast outreach across the community to bring people together, bring organizations together, bring, um, private providers, because we recognize that, that there, there are a lot of, a lot of entities that are providing childcare services where the, the staff may, may not have been trained on how to prepare kids to read in a kindergarten. So, forming partnerships with them, not, not to take the kids from them, because that's their livelihood, but how we form partnerships to be able to support their development. So, that, the benefit to us is when their kids come into us, into kindergarten, they're, they're better prepared. So, it's those types of things that we're looking at that's going to drive kindergarteners being able to demonstrate low risk.
I love that.
And then, the, the last one here, it's, this, my, my ID, you can take a look at that in the, in the appendix that talks about the, the metric, the definition, but it's, it's, it's taking a look at kids, young kids, young kids, these are pre, pre-K kids, and pre-kindergarten, you know, pre-K kids, and how they are able to hear sounds, listen to sound ID, rhyming. And so, our academic folks are saying, there are, I think, like five of these measures. So, we select, they selected two, said these are the ones that are most predictive. And so, we wanted to increase that based on these percent, these percentages here. So, those two things that last, so that's another, another example of how we would be working on with children before we got to kindergarten. All right. Then, this goal two is Algebra One readiness and achievement. And so, this, it says percent of all, the percent of all enrolled eighth grade students achieving C or higher on Algebra One and of course, exam by the end of eighth grade, will increase from twenty-four point nine to sixty, sixty point three percent. And I think the last time we talked, you know, in, you know, in a setting like this, we talked about having this goal to embrace both readiness, students that are ready and demonstrated readiness, they're able to take Algebra One, and then also achievement, the ones that, percentage that are, are, are in the course successfully. And so, by, by having all, all in the, in the, in the measure, all students, all eighth grade students in the denominator of the calculation, then that, that, that helps measure, that will help us measure readiness. And then, the other piece, then the top piece that numerator would indicate, you know, success, like there are.
My concern with this goal and interim goals is, I have no doubt that you can increase the percentage for those enrolled, but we, we have acknowledged many times, we have an access issue. So, how do we embed that within the goal, our interim goal, that we're providing more access for students to take Algebra One?
Well, isn't this worded to include all eighth grade students, not just those?
It says all enrolled.
Oh, well, they're enrolled in eighth grade, I guess. But, I thought that was the point. Twenty, twenty-five percent right now is not the number of students, that's not the percentage of students taking Algebra One that made a C or higher. That number's higher than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I'm sorry, say it again, I lost mine.
So, that the percent of all enrolled eighth grade CCSD students, that means all of the eighth grade students, not just those who are taking Algebra, correct?
Yeah, so, so, that's right. So, you, so we have, so we know, I mean, I've showed the data before, I know it's back in the wintertime, I showed it, but this is the data that was analyzed by Education Resource Strategies. And then, so they had like nine different dimensions, they analyzed data. We presented on that, specifically on Algebra One. And so, it showed, to your point, that we had students, you know, specifically minority students that were deemed eligible to take Algebra One, but they would never enroll for whatever reason. So, so they could be, so we, so we, we will, we will find out what the various reasons are. My, my speculation is that some, some of it is how we schedule, if it's facilities space. And so, those types of things, we can, we can, we can determine and, and, and work towards correcting. Some of it is the level of expectation. So, we got plans for that. So, I think if I understand the question, is that how do we make sure that we actually have kid, students have access? So, that, so the fact that, so access is not embedded in the goals, nor the interim goals, but it's a recognition that the part of the problem is access. And then, just like I talked about with the kindergarten there, I don't, in the goal, it doesn't say that we're gonna, we're gonna have more pre-K students, but that's a part of the strategy. And.
Okay.
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 What if we change the, the first part of the phrase of this goal to say the percent of all CCS students enrolled in eighth grade achieving C or higher, because that.
I'm sorry, say it again, I'll read it again.
All, the percent of all CCS students enrolled in eighth grade. Because that's, that's what we wanted for the denominator.
I think, I think that sounds great. I, I think that's what we were trying to do, Kristen, but I think, or Dr. French, I, but I think, I think the way you've ordered the words is better.
I think it'll just be more clear going forward.
Okay.
So that we don't get confused.
All right, could you, could you mind restate in it, just about clarification?
The percent of all CCSD students enrolled in eighth grade achieving C or higher on the Algebra One and of course, exam by the end of eighth grade will increase from twenty-four point nine percent in May 2022 to sixty point three percent in May 2027.
Okay.
Cindy, are you?
Are you writing that down, or don't, should I?
I sure can.
So, so, just, just to be sure, Cindy, you, you captured that, you say?
Yeah, so it was the percent of all CCS student, CCSD students enrolled in eighth grade.
Yeah, yes.
All right. Next slide, please. So, that, so the interim goes around Algebra One, then are, you know, structurally, are, are like the, the interim goals for the, for, for the reading, when we have the, when we have the, the interim assessment. So, the first one here, percentage of sixth grade students. So the first one here, percentage of sixth grade students. So the, the goal is eighth grade students in algebra one successfully. And so starting at middle grade, uh, uh, to sixth grade, the percentage of sixth grade students that are projected to be ready for algebra one will increase from forty-nine percent in April twenty-two to sixty-five point two percent in twenty twenty-five. Now, so going back to strategy, although this interim goal said we're going to take a look at sixth grade, we know that in order for sixth grade students to be um, successful to do, to meet this, then we have to start back in the earlier grades in elementary school on about how we're going to handle uh, handle math, uh, math instruction. And so, so part of the strategies that we, that we are implemented for reading in terms of uh, uh, this uh, expectation for students, expectation for staff, that sort of stuff would be, will, will have some, they have, have some uh, will have a lot of similarities. And then uh, going into the seventh grade, then the percentage of seventh grade students that are projected to be ready for algebra one will increase. So the same thing. So we look, we look at them at sixth grade, kids that are eligible, then we look at, uh, look at the students again in seventh grade uh, to see uh, their, their eligibility. And then the last one, the percentage of eighth grade students score. So we actually look at um, this one is on the benchmark assessments that um, that's given um, for algebra one, the benchmarks being um, a way to, to compare a student's uh, performance on some assessment uh, ba- uh, based on the state standards. And so you, you get this, we get an indication whether or not based on this assessment is, is linked to the state standards, how well a student may, may do on, on the standard.
I hope that this helps um, address somewhat your thoughts or concern and or concerns earlier about access because as you'll see here, we've tried to be really thoughtful. And this, this process has really challenged our thinking a lot about how we do things. And if we're able to, when we're able to pull some of these things um, to, to be successful with some of these things, it really has a, 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 a large chance to transform the system. So you'll see here that the only way we're going to be able to increase all eighth grade students having success in algebra one by the end of eighth grade is to start much earlier. But that's why we develop these interim goals beginning at the mid, that, at the beginning of the middle school year so that those teachers are tracking that all along and increasing that, that those, so those student groups um, towards the eighth grade. Does, does that make sense or alleviate some of your, your, maybe your concerns about that?
I love this, and I think you'll be able to put some sound strategies in place to really accomplish this at each grade level to accomplish the overall goal. So um, thank you, think you're spot on.
Me too. And I think that it also really helps us to see that part of the issue is whether or not students are being encouraged to take it when they're actually ready. Because you have a higher, your baseline percentage for these interim goals is higher than the percentage of students who are taking algebra in seventh and eighth grade. So creating more access for students that are eligible, that are ready, but also making sure that we're not pushing students that aren't ready to take it before they are seems pretty important.
I'm so glad you brought that point up, Dr. French. As the mother of three children myself, who all have varying um, abilities and strengths in different areas, I think that's critical. Um, I had one child, for example, who did algebra one in seventh grade. And, and again, uh, all children are different, so we, we want to make sure the public knows that we're not going to push students into algebra one if we don't think developmentally they're ready yet because that could end up doing damage, right? So, so um, I think that's why we looked at the interim goals and situated them as we have um, to ensure we're, we're adequately preparing groups of students along the way who we believe can be successful. But thank you for bringing that point up, Dr. French.
Sure. And I, I, I just wanted to add that it looks like right now the vast majority of our students are taking algebra one in the ninth grade. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but having them ready more than a year before ninth grade, um, means they could take it in eighth or ninth grade. The main point being that we want them to have it early enough that they have acts, have more options in high school to choose from. And, and it recognizes that it's on the district to make sure that they're ready.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. That's spot on, spot on.
Okay, uh, next slide, oh, right there. So um, the, the last goal then is college and career readiness. The percentage of students in the four-year cohort to graduate college and our career ready will increase from sixty-seven point seven percent uh, uh, last August twenty twenty-one to eighty-six point two percent uh, in uh, August twenty twenty-seven. So the, uh, I've talked about this uh, a few minutes ago about what sixty-seven point seven percent means, what causing career readiness means. It's all, all, all students in the fourth, in a four-year cohort, uh, the group of cohort being the group of students that start off together in the ninth grade. Uh, four years later, how many have graduated? And uh, four years later, I have a hundred percent that started in the ninth grade who were, who were college and career ready while they graduated or did not graduate. So um, so that's why the eighty-six point two percent is here um, in, as opposed to a hundred percent.
It's my impression, are we about eighty-four percent graduation rate right now?
I think it's a little bit lower. I have to get that, um, I don't know. So, so I'm gonna pull that up. Well, she's pulling that up. Actually, so Miss Denny, you might hold on a second because I'm gonna ask you to talk about the first uh, uh, interim goal here for college and career readiness. Um, so this, 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 this addresses is give you some indication of, of, of a strategy uh, that we're looking at. So it says the percentage of all high school pupils in poverty, so at least a student in poverty who score C or higher on, on Avid will increase from whatever percent to whatever percent from May. So we don't have the baseline yet, May of twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-five. And so a couple of things on this, so I asked, uh, Miss Denny. So Miss Denny is um, I, I would say is the foremost expert in, in the, in the district on Avid and has had the most uh, success with it uh, over at Early College High School. And the reason why we're focused on pupils in poverty is because we're talking, for the most part, uh, uh, first generation students who potentially attend college. So that means their, their parents, if they're in poverty, um, uh, there's a high likelihood uh, that they would uh, don't have experiences of uh, the parents of researching colleges, doing applications, supporting the students through that application process. And the students themselves may not have certain skills that would, that would, that would lend, lend uh, skills that would help them to be prepared for college. And so with this Avid program that, that's been very successful at Early College High School and then uh, we, i- i- in this, and we, we have rolled it out more sporadically across the rest of the district. And that's why we're not, we waited till May of next year to get the baseline, because we have not put this in. We have, we have plans on how we would roll this out more um, systematically across the district. But if I, if I can get uh, Miss Denny to talk a little bit about the uh, components of Avid and what, what, what those components uh, provide for students and parents in poverty.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. So Avid is, is really two things. One, it's, it is a class. It's an elective class that students can take and receive elective credit for completing. Um, at early college, the model is that students take it for all four years. So by the end of high school, it's four elective credits. But it's also a curriculum, the, the class and a way of teaching that. The way of teaching is based on um, something that Avid calls WICER, Writing Inquiry Organization re- reading and um, Writing Inquiry Organization and Reading. There, that's all, that's all it is. Um, and so having that as the underpinning for how a math class or a history class is taught, I think really um, supports that level of student engagement and high expectations. The other piece is the curricular piece. And so in the curricular piece of Avid, students are taught explicitly the skills that are required to be a successful student. And um, so it really is, i- if you think about a, a wraparound model for how you think about teaching all subject areas, but then also about teaching students' skills, including soft skills. Um, it really is advantageous to a student to be involved in.
So is this part of that strategy and like revamping of our guidance counselor?
So i- in order to be effective, have for Avid to be effective in more and more schools, uh, we have to uh, revamp how schools, sub schools think about the use of Avid and how, how do you uh, use guys, school counselors to uh, to guide um, students into the program. And, but then also there's a, a, a component where teachers have to be trained uh, on the curriculum itself. And so that's a part of the strategy also. So uh, with, over at the Early College High School, I don't know what percentage that, I know a lot of, high percentage of your, of students, I mean, of the teachers at Early College are trained Avid instructors, right?
At one point it was a hundred. I think it's probably somewhere around ninety-five percent now, if I had to guess.
So part of this is, it's not just um, guiding students into that uh, to that path, but also having trained teachers on how to uh, how to uh, uh, instruct.
How did you accomplish that initially? Just getting so many teachers buy-in to the training.
So Avid's some of the best professional development I've ever attended. Um, so it doesn't take much once a teacher attends to, to have buy-in. Um, our teachers have always at Early College um, really enjoyed the training. They enjoy, um, I think also the collaboration. It, Avid tends to break down barriers that are sort of departmental barriers that might be present in a high school. You know, you, you're less of a science teacher or a history teacher or a math teacher. You become a teacher of Avid students regardless of the subject. Um, Avid also has a school certification component that really requires as part of their rubric for school certification, access to um, advanced courses or career opportunities. Um, so it's, it's, it is truly a wraparound model for a school in terms of providing instruction directly to students changing or, or really informing the operations of, of every, every aspect of a school, from the master schedule to the budget to um, planning for professional development.
And um, re- remind me, uh, Miss Denny, is it, is the figure one hundred percent of your students, uh, Eric College High School student uh, graduated uh, college and career ready?
Yes, sir.
And would you attribute some of that, what, what a percentage of that to uh, Avid? Right. And then the next, thanks, uh, Miss Denny. So the next uh, uh, interim goal here is the percentage of African-American Hispanic tenth grade students who score C or higher. So this is on the English two benchmark. And so uh, again, it's using the benchmark on the, on a particular uh, course. In this case, English two. Uh, and so uh, and we'll talk in a minute, probably under the guardrails about some of the strategies we're looking at and and getting there. And then the third one is the percentage of eleventh grade. So this one, this is actually looking at the students in the eleventh grade who are actually already demonstrated college and career ready. So will increase from eleven point three percent for African-American Hispanic students in May of twenty twenty-two to thirty-nine point five percent in May twenty twenty-five.
And this has an access component as well to it with dual credit and the AP.
That's correct.
Yeah, Miss Herdrick, and this goes back, if, if I may, um, this goes back to some of the questions you, you posed earlier about how we work with counselors. Um, because this is going to require strategy for thought, um, advanced preparation to make sure kids are ready for and have access to. So if, if we were to go back a couple of slides, and I surely don't want to slow us down, and look at the demographics and how many students who are African-American and Hispanic are successful on AP exams and or um, have access to dual credit and demonstrate college and career readiness on one of these two paths, you'll see those numbers are significantly lower for African-American students even than for Hispanic students, if I, if I recall. Uh, thank, thank you, Miss Denny. Look, look there at the AP line for African-American students. Five percent of students in our system. Well, we, we can round it up to six. I'm a recovering English teacher, so let's round it up to six. Six percent of African-American students in our system demonstrate readiness through a three on an AP exam. So the, the strategy here is to make students ready and provide more access. Why, for example, aren't we enrolling more African-American students in courses like human geography? In some of our schools, we don't even offer that yet. So again, all of these things, particularly the ones on this slide, um, i- if you look back at Avid, these really are transformative um, strategies that are going to take a lot of effort. They're going to take the reworking of our budget. They're going to challenge the way we think about school allocations and how we provide resources. I mean, this process has really been powerful in that it allows us to think about what we could do. Um, if we, if, 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 when we really put student outcomes first. So I hope this helps explain a little bit about how this will um, require us to work more strategically with school counselors, both in the middle and in the high school. And I can say Dr. Williams, um, we, uh, who, as you know, is our associate for middle school, um, and Dr. Appleshimer uh, just last week met with uh, Jackie Haynes, Associate for Acceleration Schools and some partners we have um, in, in our local institutes of higher ed to talk about readying students in middle school. And it, it was such a powerful conversation. So thanks, thanks for asking those questions because it's something that I really get excited about, as you probably can tell.
I have one question and possibly a concern. So is using part of the measure of, of success here in eleventh grade is being six hours of dual credit courses. That does concern me that you're expecting students to take dual credit before eleventh grade. Um, uh, and I see that you're not trying to get that really high. It's, the, the goal is thirty-nine point five percent. But uh, you know, what I have seen going on in a lot of, now, I know early college is an exception, is most of the time dual credit's not happening until eleventh grade, maybe twelfth grade. And so I don't know if it's appropriate to push students to take college, actual college classes in ninth or tenth grade. I mean, obviously it should be an opportunity, but it, I'm just a little concerned because those really are college classes and I want to make sure our students are prepared for college. And I, I know of programs where students can take an, an A, a college-level English class during their, you know, hi- eleventh or twelfth grade year. And it's obviously their English credit for high school, but it's also really a college credit. That makes sense to me, but when you, if you are pushing it too soon, then I, I'm not sure what the point of that is in terms of getting the vast majority of our students. So, you know, we have so many students who just really aren't able to make a C in their regular classes and not honors or AP. And I, I'm very concerned about that group and I see what you're trying to do here to help with that. But I don't understand why six hours of dual credit before eleventh grade is one of your metrics.
Well, let, let me um, start off and then um, uh, Ms. Huggins and Miss Denny can weigh in uh, on it, uh, 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 weigh in on it. So the way I read this, it's, it's not to have ninth and tenth grade students taking uh, dual credit, it's to have students in eleventh grade taking dual courses, again, dual credit. And that uh, the intent here is to prepare uh, students to make sure that by the time students reach the eleventh grade, they are prepared to take a, uh, these types of courses. Uh, so, so the, the preparation but happens before the eleventh grade, but uh, to make sure that students, but my assumption, my assumption is that we have many students, whatever that number is, that they, that intellectually, if they were prepared, once they got into the eleventh grade, they would be able to enroll and be successful in a dual uh, credit course. And my assumption also is that, well, I'm probably not assumption, the data will show that we have a lot of our students that reached the eleventh grade, that we have a lot of our students that reached the eleventh grade that they have not been prepared for that. So, um, Vanessa.
So I think to Mr. Kennedy's point, this really speaks to having high expectations of students. Um, having the option, if you look at the interim goal, it speaks to a three or higher in one AP course or two dual credit courses, which is six credits. Um, what we, what we really talked about as a team, and, and I think we coalesced around is that any student in our system who, who, as Mr. Kennedy said, has, has the intellectual ability by the, the time they're in the eleventh grade to really be successful in, in courses where there are high, high levels of expectation. I think combined with the supports like we see in, in interim goal number one, it, it really offers a, a great deal of opportunity for students. And there's, there's a lot of power in combining high expectations and high levels of support.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm glad that you're focusing on the demographic of students who are not not achieving as highly as we'd, would like them to. So that, that helps address another concern about just the, the, you know, disparate, um, learning experiences our students have.
The, the Dr. French, I, I, I think it, the concern you raised and, and full transparency, we had a lot of robust spirited conversation around, around this goal. Um, originally, well, we changed it to by the end of the eleventh grade for some of the very same reasons that you brought up. And, um, in consideration of what you said earlier about Algebra One, because we want to ensure that students are ready, which is where that piece, Ms. Herdrick has brought up, is going to be key. That school counselor role is going to be instrumental in ensuring that we accurately and adequately play students where they're best set up for success. Um, and so we, we'll pay particular close attention to this to ensure that we do just that. It's all about giving kids access, particularly in areas of our district that they may not have access compared to peers in other parts of, of the district. But I do want to be completely transparent, as I know does Mr. Kennedy, that we had that same robust conversation. In fact, Cindy on this call was, um, such a great facilitator because she, she helped us frame our thinking. We paused on it and actually revisited it the next day. Um, so thank you for bringing up those, your, your thoughts. And I'm glad Ms. Danny was able to, to share, um, some of her thoughts about placement and, and how, um, access is so important for kids that we might not typically have it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, questions?
No, I mean, I think these exposure points are important and allow students that don't have access to these things. It expands their thinking so they have the ability to design their own path in life. And so I, uh, again, this is phenomenal.
Okay, so that takes care of the three goals and their, the interim goals. Uh, so the, that going into the guardrails, so there are five guardrails, guardrail, five graduate skills. The superintendent shall not allow students to graduate without the soft skills and financial literacy proficiency needed for post-secondary success. So two interim goals here. One, the percentage of, of, um, excuse me, two interim guardrails. One, the percentage of graduating seniors, seniors, seniors who have successfully earned their microburst certification will increase from six point five percent in April twenty-two to thirty-six point three percent in April twenty twenty-five. So a couple of points. So with microburst, burst certification, it's microburst is the actual course. Um, in that, uh, we are planning on, uh, expanding, uh, the, uh, there, I think there are ten components to it. Each component being a, a soft skill. And, um, and so there are various ways to, to administer the, the, the certification of the course. Uh, we have, uh, with our CTE teachers, I think the majority of them are certified in, in, in the microburst, uh, the training or the instruction. Uh, we're looking at, uh, other options in terms of, like this is one, uh, once, one district, one of the districts in the low country here require a microburst, uh, training or, or, uh, instruction, a class, uh, for all of the English, English one students, I believe. Um, and so, um, so it's part of the work is actually getting, uh, teachers like Avid, getting teachers trained in the certification process or the instruction process. Now, this says thirty-six point three percent of seniors, so that, that indicates that, uh, that you don't have, a student doesn't have to be a senior to take the certification. So you would be, it would be, um, you take it in your sophomore year, take it in your junior year. Uh, and so, so we're not focusing exclusively on, on, on seniors taking the course and successfully passing it. But over time, all students being able to, uh, take the certification.
So that thirty-six point three percent is for seniors who have taken it at any point during high school?
Oh, they may have taken it in the senior, they may have taken it in the senior, um, senior year. And then there may be students that are taking it in the ninth, the ninth grade. Now, if we, if, but depending on what strategy we roll out, you know, we may have a requirement that all students in the ninth grade, as an example, in a particular course, that, that, that might take the microburst, uh, class. I don't know yet. We haven't fully developed those, uh, the strategies for that. What we do know is that the mic, if, if a student has a microburst certification, that, that's a clear indicate, indicator, um, that this, that they have the soft skills needed. And, uh, this has been demonstrated by the local, uh, uh, employers. So they put, place high value. You know, the, the large corporations place high value on that certification. In fact, uh, I was, um, to even, wa- wa- late one afternoon, uh, I can't remember, I think it was Tuesday. Uh, I was in a meeting over at, uh, the West Ashley CAS, uh, that included some, um, uh, some business people, included, uh, Rich Gordon, who runs our CTE program, included two principals, uh, from, uh, CAS, uh, Vanessa Brown up at the East Cooper, East Cooper CAS, and then, um, Dale Metzger from down at the, uh, West Ashley CAS. And so, uh, uh, the principal at the West, uh, Ashley CAS said he had two students that were interviewing for a job. And they, they, they're, they're skill sets, not soft skills, that what they, what, what the requirements of the job in terms of not, non-s soft skills were pretty much identical in that the employee told him, we selected this particular student because this student had the micro, microburst uh, certification versus the other one that did not.
And it looks like they have curriculums that go to elementary all the way through post-secondary and have a special education component.
Oh, that's good. So I guess I'm just trying to understand why thirty-six percent, um, is it, is it because we just don't have enough teachers ready to teach this? Or because, um, you're talking about students who have some, at some point in high school have gotten the certification. But you're, it shows thirty-six percent of seniors who have gotten it at some point, not during their senior year, but just at some point. And I was just wondering if, um, uh, and I know that's just until twenty twenty-five, so, uh, you hope to continue.
Yes, so part of, part of, we don't have the infrastructure in place yet, so we've got identified teachers. We got, the teachers have to be trained, they have to be, the teachers have to be certified to teach. Um, um, so there's, there's, there's a lot of work that, that has to go, that has to take place to, to get there. So as you indicated, this is April twenty twenty-five, so over time, by the time we get to April twenty twenty-seven, you know, that, that percentage will be significantly increased.
Okay.
Is this something that early college has in place?
That they rely on Avid.
Do you think it's po- are you going to have strategies in place throughout elementary, middle and high school?
So, so the, the, the discussion that, that we have had has been exclusive, uh, uh, exclusive with, um, high school. As opposed to the elementary schools and the, and the middle schools.
Is twelfth grade too late if there's things that we have to catch students up on?
Well, so perhaps, perhaps. And, and, uh, and so if, 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 part of the, part of the discussion in terms of strategy, take, uh, as I indicated a few minutes ago, we looked at one district, I think it was, uh, the, uh, there was just the two, I think it is, that they have a requirement that all of their ninth graders, I believe, is they're taking a particular course. I think it's, um, one of the English course, English one, I guess, that they have to, they have to, uh, take this, take the course. That's a part, the microburst course is a part of that English course. And, um, and so we may take that, that tack. I don't know yet. Um, and certainly, certainly we won't take that tack next year because we won't have the infrastructure in place. So then we would have to work with students in eleventh grade next year, or twelfth, students are in twelfth grade now and students in twelfth grade next school year. But over time, perhaps we can have, have them all certified before twelfth grade. I, I just, I don't, we don't have enough, we haven't made enough enrolls in our, in our, our strategies on that yet.
Would it be possible to change this to like a twenty twenty-three goal and, and do it for eleventh graders? Just for, or to potentially, we have some goals that are starting in twenty twenty-three. To put the infrastructure in place, that way that we have a year prior to them graduating to kind of work out some of the kinks. I just worry that seniors are, is too late.
Yeah, I see your point.
Especially in, um, in some of our schools that don't have these resources as we're ramping up algebra access and you're having to put a bunch of these points together to have these budgeting skills. And, um, I, I just worry that getting this off the ground, even focusing on seniors that we're gonna, we're gonna miss a lot.
All right, so I'm making a note. So we, we'll, the staff will follow up on that, um, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming that just like this one, the next interim guardrail is about percentage of high school students completing it. But by the time they graduate, so, okay.
And, and, and I think, uh, we, we'll brief the board that the state, state has a curriculum, a financial literacy curriculum that's going to be mandatory, that's being developed now. And, uh, and so, so part of our, part of our, uh, work on this is understanding what that curriculum is and what the requirements are, which they haven't been rolled out yet. They're still, the standards are still being developed by the state.
I was on a call this week, or one of my, um, staff members was, and actually, um, Junior Achievement here locally has a great training program for financial literacy. It might be worth exploring. I don't know how comprehensive it is in comparison to what the state's developing, but worth a look at how we could potentially partner with local organizations to assist until that curriculum is built out.
And based on this baseline you have, you're expecting that cour- course to be available in the spring?
Uh, no, no. So, um, what, um, so, so we, we currently, the district already has courses on financial literacy.
I know, okay. So, but, but we just said a low level right now, okay.
Dawn, I just wanted to add, I, I didn't want to interrupt because everyone just was going back and forth. But that, the, the thought that Lauren just gave on that graduation rate, and I know you made note of that, uh, I, I was going to allude to that, but Lauren kind of covered it for me. But, uh, fully support that, that approach as far as the, uh, the year. I think Lauren said twenty twenty-three instead. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, fully support that, that, that move if we can make it work.
All right, like I said, I have a note on that, so we'll follow up on that with, uh, tomorrow. Um, okay.
Mr. Kennedy, can I ask Reverend Mack and Ms. Herdrick if they would be open to maybe us looking at changing, um, that goal to eleventh grade? But maybe establishing annual target versus changing the, the year on, on that, because it is, it's going to take us some, it's going to take us some time to build it out. But I, I, I feel, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to maintain a, a robust, you know, a pro- projection. But our, our annual targets would have to be almost, um, dependent upon what strategy we use. And we're already, Rich Gordon and Sherry Appleshimer are already working with, um, our high school principals on this. Um, I, I, I just, I think setting annual targets might help us accomplish the goal a, a little bit better. Uh, but I mean, we could, we, we could, we could still revise the goal to focus on the eleventh grade. And am I making any sense on, on that?
So I think I'm going to interject here just for a second, just to remind everyone that the superintendent owns the interim goals and the interim guardrails. So if there's something that you need to be more explicit ar- uh, around in the guardrail itself, then that's for the board to rewrite. Um, while the interim guardrails belong to the superintendent and in, and in collaboration. But I'm also going to, um, I, and I, I think Anita's point is, is valid, and that is the, the yearly targets are going to, going to spell out more so the expectation that that, yeah, that that, it is probably going to be some slow growth in the beginning until such time that they can get built up. So, um, I know you don't have those interim, are those yearly, uh, targets in front of you. Um, but that, that would be part of how they will be strategizing around, uh, honoring this guardrail.
I guess I just have a question around microverse. It seems like a pretty comprehensive curriculum. And it seems like if we start senior year, that there's going to be some gaps. And so that's just my question around building these skills so students are truly college and career ready. How do we do that in the twelfth grade year, looking at how robust this curriculum is?
I, I think that's part of our strategy, Ms. Herdrick, because you're, you're spot on. I think Ms. Waters actually mentioned that she might have gotten to observe this over at the West Ashley or the Cooper River CAS. And it is, but our strategy, our, our plan right now is to have high school principals help us determine how best we fit this into how we schedule kids. Because again, this is another one of these guardrails or strategies that potentially really, really impact how we do things in CCSD. When you start talking about children's schedules and how you change the, the traditional schedule to fit in pieces like this. So like Mr. Kennedy said, is this, are, you know, are these skills and modules pieces that for a microburst that you, you build in, you begin building in early on in the ninth grade? We, we know of districts that have a, um, like a freshman seminar type course where these things are embedded. You, you're right, you know, what do we do for the graduating classes? Up until the point we build out the system, we have to think about that and other ways they can get this. Um, but that, that is really something that we have to use our experts that we consider to be our principals on this to figure out what it looks like for, for kids and typically in schools. Particularly, again, with how we, how we schedule kids.
Okay. Thank you.
I brought that up and I, because I, on all these pieces, um, the annual targets for me are going to be key because those are the targets we then build, um, our, our internal evaluations on how we work with our principals and determine what sort of supports we need for them. And, and that, of course, goes down to our classrooms ideally in order to support, you know, this student outcomes at, um, achievement and, and growth for all kids.
So let me, um, just reiterate with, um, not the major points you, you are talking about, but a point that, um, Anita just made about, uh, principals' goals. So i- in addition to the work that we've been doing centrally here in terms of establishing interim goals to support the goals and interim guardrails to support those, um, the academic team, uh, has also been working with principals to start establishing um, their goals, that's aligned, school goals that align to these goals and interim goals that are being set up. So that work's already underway.
So you feel like you have a lot of buy-in across the district?
Well, we'll, so we, we've done a lot of communicating across the district. So next month, within November, when we have, uh, the, the lead meeting, other principals' monthly meeting, uh, we will, uh, focus, uh, probably exclusively, if, if, not exclusively, most of the meeting on, on these goals. Care to make sure alignment is there because they, they have seen the goals. They have seen some, uh, this high-level discussions about. They have seen some uh high level discussions about interim goals, but they haven't seen all these details, so they will. Uh, in the over the next few weeks, and then when we meet with them in November, we will go through these. And then also, like I said, the uh academic teams already start working with principals on on their goals that would be. That are aligned and will be aligned, so we'll, we'll see how that plays out next next month, and then some of the strategies, which you'll see here in the. In the next guard rail, I think it is about how do we put strategies in place to to support uh schools coming on board with all all of the uh. The work associated with, so this is really, the part of this work, significant part of this work is really. Creating high expectations for all students. And so um, so 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 we're gonna talk about that in 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 a minute, uh next slide or two. Next slide, please. Oh, there it is.
Alright.
So guard rail two, social emotional learning, superintendent shall now allow students to go without social emotional learning. So the interim guard rails here are three. Uh, the first one, the percent of elementary students, I mean, schools uh achieving an average of seventy percent or higher on the. Uh SAM slash slash T F I operationalizing, I explained that will increase by fifteen percent from the baseline of. Whatever percent in May next year to uh whatever percent in May of twenty twenty-seven. So the 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 SAM and the uh T F I are uh. Uh tools. Uh currently largely uh self self assessment tools that takes a look at the. The efficient, the effectiveness of uh implementation of our support systems, structures that the multi-tier system of support uh support. Uh M T S S, uh our uh P B I S po- positive behavior uh of strategies. And uh and so what what's being developed, what's being developed? Is a uh is a a sort of a tool that, so right now, these tools are. In self-assess, self 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 assessment tool. I take the tool, I take the estimate and uh say uh the rate myself. So we're revamping the tool, it's still being used as a self self assessment, but also a uh strategy that the district office would use, principals would use and um. Um, level leaders would use to actually do. An independent assessment. On how effective. We are supporting students, uh classrooms are supporting students, the schools are supporting students. And so for the percent, for the first one is that elementary schools and the operationalizing. Yeah, it's um, it's a term that's used in the assessment that indicates at what level. A person is or in this case, whereas we develop this out, what level of classroom or school is, so it's it's a technical term from the tool itself. And so that level means that that operationalizing level mean that that there's a level of effectiveness. So it's a technical term that um I believe is described in the uh the definition metrics in the appendix. So the same thing with the uh middle school stu- uh middle schools and then um and also with the uh. Uh, the high schools.
So. Since we don't know what the baseline is at all, it's hard to. Predict how much you want to increase it, and I'm just concerned. Um, I'm sure you talked with Cindy about this, needles burned about this, but. Um. Are these gonna really stretch people to change their adult behaviors? Because these are all about adult behaviors, right? And 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 also to help me understand better how the independent assessment will help to prevent. Self-assessment from being too biased.
Mr. Kennedy, I don't I don't mind hopping in on that one if if you don't mind, because I I get really passionate about um. About this, do you do you mind, Mr. Kennedy?
Please, please proceed.
Uh, Dr. French, so. So so for my limited perspective and and it it surely is limited, I I believe that. M T S S is the single most supportive system in any school. K twelve, if you don't have a highly functioning M T S S. Tiered system of support. For students. There is no way. You can meet the needs. Of students, particularly students in poverty and students who. Have historically been underserved, so this. This again is another example of. We really are gonna need more hours in the day because. This is requiring us. To. Merge two tools together, the SAM, which is the self-assessment for M T S S and the T F I, which is the tiered fidelity inventory. Which monitors how we do P B I S, our positive behavior support systems district-wide. We're we're merging those in. Into a tool that helps us at the central level formatively monitor. How schools are implementing M T S S. And to what extent their efforts are done with fidelity to support students, particularly students. Who are at tier two and tier three, and as you know, those are typically our most marginalized, our most. Needing students, so the self-assessment is still needed, it's important for. Schools and school teams to self-assess where they are. Before. So that so that they can say, hey, Anita, um, or hey, Lisa Allison, or hey, Joe Williams. We're here and for our growth and development, we need X, Y, and Z. We need these supports in our schools, we've got X number of students who are. Um, we're we're doing threat assessments on who are ranking high for for suicidal tendencies, we've got. This number of students doing this, so that self-assessment is critical. For them to be able to identify, first of all, what supports they need at the school level. But then the formative tool that we will use to be able to go in and sit alongside. M T S S teams and P B I S teams. To assess how those things are going and how successful things are. We'll use student data to determine some of that, we'll use some of their anecdotal data to determine that will help us then more strategically. Um. Uh, provide support at the district level, provide uh change our budget at the district level and. It will make us accountable at the district level for ensuring. Those school-based teams are successful, this guard rail requires us to do a level of. Support. Um. And strategizing boots on the ground with folks. That we've. Uh not had the bandwidth to do before, so. As a result, we're gonna have to change the way we do some things. And I I I hope that answered both your questions, I don't, I don't know whether. It did, but we, because the tool doesn't exist yet, we don't have a baseline. Um. But we do believe that that fifteen percent will stretch us significantly because. The level of work and thought and support that we'll have to offer to move teams. Will in some ways be. Quite significant based on what we currently know about M T S S structures across our system, which vary widely.
Thank you, that really helps me understand it better.
And and another piece of that is uh there's a team that's taking a look, start started recently. Um, taking a look at our enrollment and registration process of students so that we can try to try to figure out how we can go about. Identifying what specific needs of individual students are, what those needs are. Before schools start, whether it's in the spring when it's when registration is taking place or sometime leading into the summer. So that um we can start putting these these uh support structures in for students. U- using the M T S S framework. At the very beginning of school, because we know as a system, we know as uh. As a school, what those these are again on an individual student level, so that's another. Example of a body of of effort and work that has to be really built out, you know, built out, because it's not in place right now. It doesn't exist. Alright, so that's social emotional learning. Next, uh guard rail three. Uh stakeholder engagement, uh the superintendent shall not present major initiatives to the board without engaging schools. That includes parents, guardians, students, staff. Uh, then the district and community stakeholders who are most impacted by the initiative uh decision. Uh, so interim guard rails on that, the percentage of secondary schools to have a representative student advisory. So the student advisory, so this would be uh student stakeholders, student stakeholders, what what do students? How 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 do they react to any major initiative that um that that the staff may be presenting to uh to the school board? That so they they have a representative student advisory, holding three or more meetings per year will grow from a less than five percent today. In May of twenty-two to seven-five percent by May twenty twenty-five. And then feedback from those advisory uh groups, student advisory groups would be provided to the district via the superintendent's uh student cabinet. Number two.
Like that, yeah, that sounds great.
So that's that 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 addresses the student voice, student agency. Um, it started sort of started us down the path of about having success there. Number two, the number of public-facing stakeholder interactions to solicit. Uh, feedback on district initiatives will increase from less than ten in May of twenty twenty-two to forty in uh May twenty twenty-five. And then finally, the numbers, the number of times the superintendent will solicit feedback from the board of trustees. To identify, for the board to identify. And with the superintendent, major decisions to guide quarterly roundtables will increase from. A zero times currently to forty times in uh May twenty twenty-five, so those roundtables are 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 um. Affinity-type groups, so we we have a teacher roundtable, we have a principal roundtable, so those. Those exist now, uh in the past, we've had uh external roundtables that we have already reached out to um. The constituencies, people, individuals in these uh communities to reestablish, so those would be like a business roundtable. A faith-based uh roundtable, and then we will create uh a literacy roundtable.
You say forty, do you mean per year? Um. Or during the time period, the the whole cycle?
Um, it's a good question, um. Vanessa.
The whole cycle, okay, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe just to clarify, might need to clarify the language there, but I think that's makes a lot of sense.
I'm glad you lifted that up, Dr. French, I think, yeah, clarifying the per year versus the full cycle because it does read like forty per year, so I was. I was wondering the same thing.
Well, superintendent, I can breathe a sour relief on that one.
Here with all the other new board members.
That's right.
And so guard rail four, uh treatment and expectations of students, the superintendent shall now allow disparate treatment. Nor lower expectations for any students, so the guard rails. We have one. Um. So the percent of teachers rated proficient or higher on the expectations domain of the classroom walkthrough tool will increase from. X percent in May twenty twenty-three to Y percent in May twenty twenty-five, so I'm gonna ask uh uh Ms. Huggins to talk about this walkthrough tool. So it's a tool that's currently being developed, uh and the purpose of it is for uh for for it to be used in schools, in classroom to um. Monitor how. Uh, students are. Are approached in terms of their their expectations of uh learning, so um Anita.
Real quick, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt Anita if you don't mind. I think I'm having a little recall on that last um interim guard rail, and I'm wondering if it was um. Supposed to be a four rather than a forty, and that 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 was, could that have been possibly a typo, so seeking four times per year?
Oh.
I I think so, Cindy, I think you you may be right there, yes ma'am.
Okay, I that's, I was. I'm thinking that was the conversation that I was recalling, so. Yeah, so seeking seeking um feedback. Increasing from zero times a year to four times per year.
And the same for the. So the public-facing stakeholder interactions, would that be less than one, two, four per year?
I'll defer to the.
Anybody remembers. Just make sure that.
Yeah, we'll we'll make sure that that was, yep. I just wanted to point that out while I was remembering before you went completely into the next one, so.
Yeah.
Can I also, when we send this out to the board in advance of Monday's meeting that we do black line edits, so they know what we've edited. Um, in this session. That way it's not. A crazy amount of feedback coming back.
We'll be happy to do that, Ms. Hurdrick, yes ma'am, thanks, thanks for that suggestion. So this uh this guard rail four on the walkthrough tool, we're currently in the process of um. Working with a partner, Wetstone, to um. Develop an electronic tool that focuses on two key domains. The most important domain um in regards to teaching and learning, which are classroom instruction.
You're breaking.
Bottom line upfront, the point, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. French, please forgive me, um, the the point is to develop a tool, and we're. Close to being complete um completely done with the tool that focuses on two key domains, the most. Important we consider in regards to teaching and learning, which are classroom instruction. Um, and uh and classroom environment, and so. We're currently uh planning to vet this with our teacher roundtable group. Um, and our principal cabinet, um, our prin- our teacher roundtable group next week and our principal cabinet uh at at our next meeting with them. To to uh talk more about the ratings associated with um key indicators in each of those areas, again rigorous instructions. Uh, which points to. Holding all students accountable, having high expectations for students, asking challenging questions. Providing uh aligned, standard-based grade-level content, and in that environment. Authentically engaging students um beyond just a ritual compliance. That tool will then be used to train principals. Who and teacher coaches and other um district leaders who will in turn go into classrooms. Give teachers feedback and in real time, it can be utilized as a coaching tool by which teachers can exchange. Um, via um text with the person who came in to provide them. Um, formative feedback, again, the 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 goal here is to provide um this formative tool for coaching. To focus on these two areas, which will assess. The level of expectations in the classroom and how engaging the classroom environment is. So once we have the tool assessed, uh I'm sorry, once we have the tool developed and put on the electronic platform called Wetstone. Get our folks trained, do some inner rate of reliability type things to ensure that. What looks like high expectations in one part of our county looks like high expectations in another part of our county. We will execute this, hopefully at the beginning of the second semester. And begin utilizing this to provide that feedback to teachers, one thing we constantly hear from teachers is we want feedback. We want to know what you're seeing, we want. To hear, you know, the the areas that you think were strong again, or where you think we could um. Um, we could, we could have some support, we'll then use those results for a lot of different, a lot of different things. Um. But primarily to determine um. What sorts of professional professional development we offer teachers. And how we provide support to groups of teachers who may be struggling in some of the similar areas, so. Mr. Kennedy, I hope that gave a a thorough enough overview, is that what you had in mind?
Uh, it was great, thank you.
Do you have any questions about that?
It sounds really good.
So like a transparent rubric where you're having. True observations in classroom.
I tell you, you could have summed it up a lot easier, a lot more quickly than I did, Ms. Hurdrick, that's exactly right, or. A rubric that identifies indicators in two key domains, instruction and environment. So you can see what's going on in classrooms, provide feedback, and then align professional development of what people need, again. A really heavy lift on our part because um. We're with uh Ms. Simmons, our our C A O, we're working with her team, and then again, um, our stakeholders to develop the tool, make sure it's. Sound, um, and then that inner rate of reliability is going to be key. To ensuring that what Mr. J- to ensuring that what Mr. James Dallas sees at Ellington, for example, it, which is rigorous, is the same thing that um uh you know, Mr. Michael Antonelli over at Carolina Park, and you know, same thing at South Point. Um, so that, again, a, a really, a really heavy lift, but we're up for the challenge because we believe it will positively impact students.
That's awesome. And I, I loved your explanation in a second.
So guardrails two, guardrails two, guardrail two, social immersion learning and guardrail um for treatment and expectation of students. This is going, if, if implemented, designed, if designed and implemented effectively, it's going to change the level of expectation for students in this district.
There's an after-school assessment tool where there's, um, and this would be a huge lift, but um there's two people that go in for the observation, and they rate on the tool and have to equally score eighty percent for it to be valid. So could look at something like that, obviously, two people. Assessing would be hard, but you train a broad staff to kind of go in and assess on every level. That way you are providing feedback that's consistent.
That's interesting.
And you said, when is that?
That is, that is. Am, am I breaking up again? I'm so sorry. Um, my internet is spotty. Ms. Herdrick, that is spot on. We've done some of this work in the district before where we took in groups of four or five, and we came out, everybody shared their ratings, what they saw, why they thought the lesson rated as it did, and discussed those sorts of things that only through that type of professional development for principals and leaders can you truly attain um a, a, a standard of excellence, a, a, a common language across the district, and we've done exactly what you, what you, you suggested, and the state has done that i- in some in the past, which is showing videos and ask leaders to rate based on what they saw. And um
Okay, you're really breaking.
Their rating. Sorry.
All right.
I, I think, I think y'all got it just.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to ask a question about this guardrail, though. Um, so, and on your other guardrails, you had two or three uh interim guardrails, and one thing, and I also realize that you have woven this guardrail into some of your interim goals. So I, I greatly appreciate that. One goal where I feel like maybe this it might be lacking a little bit is the algebra goal, where I'm not sure how we're going to monitor that to make sure that we're not getting most of our improvements for, in one group of students, for instance, in terms of demographics. So right now, it, because algebra, um, you know, we did decide to, to focus on all of the students because there's an awful lot of students that aren't taking algebra. Uh, but I want to make sure that we are keeping an eye on the data that shows whether we're not, we're um not allowing the system to continue to allow dis, you know, the racial disparities that we see in our student learning. Is there a way this could be incorporated just as a measure? Um, it is, it is your decision is, is, I guess, uh, what I'm trying to get at is that disparate treatment and our low expectations also needs to address the fact that we have these really significant ed- education gaps. And how can we address that?
Well, I'll start off. So the way I think about it is that we have the academic instructional component, you know, so you have to have the right curriculum. We have that with EL, we have the other right curriculum, we have that with math. Um, and then, then it becomes, uh, how are those uh how's, uh, how's that, how's the, do we have the rigorous instruction associated with those curriculums? Uh, in many cases, the answer is no. And so these two guardrails, two and four, then, are the tools that are being developed that will allow the appropriate staff, along with school-based staff, to assess how those instructions, that instruction is being carried out in classrooms. So you mentioned uh algebra one, the algebra goal. Well, we know that um we have to have kids um prepare in math before they get to algebra one. And so these types of guardrails here will allow for us to make sure that, that the classroom instruction is rigorous, classroom instruction is uh on grade level. And I, and, and I've been in classrooms, I have been in classrooms since I've been in this role, but I know from my observation, the, the answer to that is no. And so the tools will, will allow for that. And then with the, the, the instructional piece with the curricula, then uh then we just make sure that we implement. And so then, the data then, and the, under the goals, not under guardrails, the data on the, under the, uh, the measures, the, the internal measures, in, interim goals, under the goal section, that will tell us whether or not we're making progress. Now, this, so that's the way I think about it. Uh, Anita, I don't know if you uh, you still in um internet range or not?
Can you hear me now, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
So uh, Dr. French, you, again, your question is helping me to think. I, I think what Mr. Kennedy said is spot on, that this tool will have a key component in that instruction domain that deals with expectations, will help us determine whether teachers are maintaining and be able to support them, those high expectations for all kids, whether that be you know, kids with special needs, kids of color, kids in poverty. But if we think back, and it's something we may want to consider adding, uh, Mr. Kennedy and uh Cindy and uh those, the folks on this call, this Wetstone tool, we are already building out for both English and math, the tool that looks at um E L and our illustrative math, and how well teachers are teaching, Dr. French, the core. And so that might get to, to some of what you're talking about if we add some interim guardrails here that um help us to study English and math, because then we'll be able to break down that data to see where our curve in those particular content areas to work towards the goal. Does that make sense? Does that, does that address some of your thoughts?
I think it does. I just, I guess I want to also make sure that we're clear in our guardrail language that, that we want, w- will probably always, the board will probably always want to see disaggregated data. Um, e- even when the goal says for all students, because we know that we have a historical issues and we don't want to perpetuate that. So um, I'm thinking about that, and maybe that's something that will come out of uh the development of data reports on all of these uh that will make sure that they always look the same, for instance, and hoping that we might have a minute to talk with Cindy about the next steps for that part.
Okay, so moving to the last guardrail, guardrail five, climate, the superintendent shall not allow negative or unsupportive staff climate. So we have two uh interim guardrails, one, the district's percentage of non-teaching school-based staff that respond favorably regarding their perceptions of overall social and learning climates. So this terminology, social and learning climate, that terminology is from the Pan- Panorama Survey. Um, social and learning climate of school as measured by the uh school climate topic on the Panorama Survey, survey will increase from sixty-two percent in April twenty-twenty-two to seventy-two percent in May twenty-twenty-seven. And um, so I'm wondering, as I look at this, that May twenty-twenty-seven, oh, this is for Cindy and Anita and uh Vanessa, whether that should be May twenty-twenty-five? As an interim guardrail. Cindy, are you still there?
I'm here. And, and uh, I think that the interim guardrails, we were looking at twenty-twenty-five. However, um, I'll defer to the team as to whether or not that uh target percentage uh actually correlates with the twenty-twenty-seven or a twenty-twenty-five end date.
I think, um, I think we better look at that with Ms. Allison. Mr. Kennedy, if you can hear me, my internet may be spotty again. Can you hear me?
All right, we can hear.
Yeah, so.
I, I, we might, we might want to um look at that, but you're spot on in all of our other interim guardrails. We did look at it, the three-year trajectory. I just want to look at that data point and make sure that um, that that is, the, would be a three-year versus a five-year. But I think our, um, we can, we can adjust that uh before we post for our Monday meeting, perhaps.
All right, so we'll look at that. And then um, so we have, again, two interim guardrails, one for non-teaching school-based staff and the other one for teaching staff.
I have a question on this. I hear from teachers a lot that they're afraid to be transparent in these surveys because they feel like that they're going to be tracked, even though it's anonymous. Would this be something that we should work with an outside entity on, like Jody Stilings Group or a teacher association that has a wide reach that can send out surveys where teachers can give honest feedback? Um, perhaps Jody or other groups would be willing to work with the district to create the questions, but they're not using their C C S D emails. C C S D doesn't house the data, that that could be produced by, I, I keep bringing Jody up, for instance, just because that's the one I'm more familiar with, and provide that data to the district as we work to improve the culture overall.
Uh, 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 do you mean not use the panorama survey yourself?
Yes, like really work where this is not an internal effort initially. I mean, I think it probably could become that as the culture starts to improve, but being able to have a process where teachers do feel like that they can provide truthful feedback and not be tracked.
So, so I, I hear the concern.
Yeah.
And then uh also, um, uh, the question I would have, and I don't know the answer, so I have to explore it with, you know, with, with appropriate staff and maybe Jody also. I don't, the panorama survey is, is, is a survey that's that's developed by survey people.
Yeah.
And uh, and, and, and it provides a comparison to other parts of the country, other school districts. And whereas I, I don't, I don't, I, I value the survey that I get from the teacher group through, through Jody and his group. Uh, and I, and I, you know, take action on those, but I don't know how to, how that survey is developed. And I, and certainly I can't compare, use that from comparison standpoint. So I hear what you're saying. And uh, so let me talk with, uh, starting with Anita. Um, a- at some point, it, it may, it may not be tomorrow, but I'll start having that conversation. So Anita, you have any thoughts on that initially?
Um, Ms. Herdrick, I, I hear what you're, you're saying. I think anytime we complete a survey, I just did one for one of my children's schools. You always um, you worry, oh, should I really get sent on this? Um, although I, I was very nice in my comments on the survey. The, um, the panorama survey is a third party, so we might need to do a better job building capacity internally so that our stakeholders understand um that it is a third party and that we don't track responses. I know Buffy Roberts, I think, is on this call. There's a lot of work been done around uh ensuring validity and reliability of that work. Ms. Roberts, do you have, or you're Dr. Gilmore, you're, you're m- more um astute on validity and reliability in regards to surveys? Do you, do you, can you add anything about panorama?
Um, the panorama survey is, um, it is produced by an outside um vendor. Um, and so that data is captured through the, the vendor services. It's not something that um we would necessarily, you know, be able to pull um actual identifiable um information. We would have, we would have to actually reach out to the vendor to have that happen. So that could be a closed um survey. Um, we also were able to identify um students for the purpose of um being able to assist them with any type of um trauma or any type of an emergency need or something along those lines. But um it would not be for the purpose with the teacher, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I think it's just the perception of it, and I don't know if we do a combination of things where we are listening locally to, I think it's ultimately a series of questions that more of these teacher alliances are asking. If it could be a combination of things as we kind of work to improve culture and climate until we can address the perception that answers are being tracked.
So, so Anita, what if we were to do this, uh, that we would put that on as a topic with the uh, uh, the teacher roundtable?
I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
Or, and are the teacher cabinet?
Yeah, yes, sir. I think that's a great idea. And uh, Jody and Michelle and Mr. Adrian King, uh, who's with the C C E A here locally um are all part of some of our uh focus groups right now that, as, as we're looking at how the uh as we're looking at teacher compensation and how we uh make teachers um work experience the best they can be. And so I think we can, Mr. Kennedy, have a conversation with them and maybe look, Ms. Herdrick, at, at um you know, the, the potential of adding a third guardrail here to help, help us track that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure that our intent was clear because I'm not sure I'm understanding what you mean by overall social climate, for instance. So I was also concerned that some staff have expressed that they feel, and then this doesn't have anything to do with surveys, they don't feel comfortable in their school or between their school and the, and central office, that they feel um concerned about bad behaviors between adults that affect adults as well. So part of this is not just about whether or not there's a good climate for the students, but are the staff treating each other well? And I think this also speaks to modeling, you know, good adult behaviors around our students.
Let me ask Ms. uh Buffy Roberts to address that. At my understanding, though, that these um, these uh.
Will the survey cover that kind of?
Yeah, this, this, my understanding, this part of the survey addresses what you are, you are, you are asking. It's not about students here. It's about the climate within uh a, a department, or this case, within, within a school building. So uh, Buffy?
Um, yes, sir. Um, there are questions that do relate to um relationships with um, with peers or colleagues. So it would address exactly what you're talking about, um, Dr. French and um, Mr. Kennedy.
Also supervisors and on and up the chain.
I would have to go back and look at specific questions, but there are um questions about um leadership um a- and that sort of thing as well.
Okay. All right, good.
So that concludes then the um, the information on the guardrails and the, and the goals and all the interim there are.
This is so exciting.
Yes, it really is.
Very exciting.
Uh, uh, Anita and I talked earlier today about um engagement with Cindy. So Cindy, this probably be like the first time you heard this, I'm assuming, um, we had I'm assuming it's the first time you heard this. So I know part of the student governance framework, um, a, a critical component of it is how, how the monitoring process is uh implemented and, and, and follow-through on. So what Anita and I talked about is um, the, the next step for us, the staff to start in, in addition to cleaning up the uh, this, you know, the guardrails and all this stuff, uh, the next step would be to uh start developing what that looks like for C C S D based on, on, on the uh, on the governance framework. So Cindy, since you're on, I have, and I didn't reach out to you to talk with you about this ahead of time, do you, with you, within the framework and how we lay out the timing of how all this rolls out? And that, it, it, within the, within the framework itself, I'm not talking about within the district, in the framework, with the, with, with this being the most next logical step? Trying to figure out the monitoring process?
Yes, definitely. So it, it will be around figuring out um the mon, both the monitoring calendar, so um that uh cadence of all of those monitoring reports where you will track the interim goals, interim guardrails, and that will um follow a um. you'll have a, a calendar that goes for as long as your goals do. Um, so it'll, it'll be a long-term calendar that, that maps out, um, when the board would actually receive those reports and, um, and then that you would have the convert, the monitoring conversation with them. Um, and then actually, uh, developing the monitoring report template itself. Uh, and, and I think Dr. French alluded to this a little bit, but that, um, typically, uh, the template is going to look fairly the same for each, um, you know, so, so it's in a consistent format, and there are various components, um, that need to be present within it. Um, and so, we'll work on, on that as well. And then, um, later, later, a little bit later, but not too much later, um, usually what we recommend as, uh, boards are getting into this is to actually practice monitoring, um, and sometimes boards will do this before they even have, even have like, you know, before the actual, uh, well, they'll, they'll practice with, with the data that's available. I know some of your monitoring, um, metrics, some of your interim goals and interim guardrails don't have baselines yet, but with what you have, we would do some practicing. And that gets, that gets, uh, people familiar with the monitoring report itself, um, and that template. And it helps, uh, administration and the board decide if that's going to be, um, the best, most readable format, et cetera. Um, and then just getting familiar with, with, that there are, um, definitely more effective monitoring questions um, that, that can be asked than others. And, um, again, Dr. French, you got a, a little exposure to this through the cohort that she, she's been involved in. So, um, it'll, it, it's, it's a muscle to build. Um, so I think, but the immediate next steps, you are absolutely right. It's around the, the monitoring calendar and the monitoring report template. Um, and I am, yes, happy to be a, a resource and support for that as well. Just before I forget, the things that I marked down as, um, needing, uh, attention for what you have here is changing the wording on, uh, the percent of all CCS students enrolled in eighth grade on, on that goal. Um, the guardrail, um, changing that from forty to four times per year. And then, uh, looking at the potential of another interim guardrail to uh, cover the disparate, um, portion of that guardrail, and then making sure that the climate, uh, for the climate guardrails, uh, interim guardrails, that the percentage actually corresponds to twenty twenty-five and getting that year corrected. And then, it sounds like, uh, staff is going to explore some, another possibility in addition to what they already have there with the Panorama Survey. Did I miss anything as far as noting what, what needed to be addressed and what was just presented?
I just think one of the questions will come up from the microburst and exploring how that's implemented across high school in general versus just in senior year and obviously the
That's right.
ownership of that guardrail. But, um, but just looking at that for future years, if that goal starts in twenty twenty-three, so we can look at further development. That was the last.
One thing I just forgot about is it does say certification as opposed to when you took any of the curriculum of it. So, you could be exposed to it for, you know, over a few years in different parts of the curriculum. Uh, but then you do the, the certification at some point to make sure you have it to build your resume, et cetera. And, and show that you've accomplished that. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think so. So, so we will be taking a little look at that, the Microsoft, not Microsoft, microburst. But, all right, and get clarification and, and, uh, make sure that we where, how, where we can be, I mean, all of this is pretty aggressive. All of this is really aggressive.
Yeah.
But how, how we can be more, um, we, we can celebrate some of the, some of the work. We'll, we'll certainly do that. So, we'll look at the, um, understanding concern about we have students right now that are in graduate here eight and a half months.
Yeah. Oh, I can't thank you all enough. This is, Cindy, I know you've been in a conference all day and have been blocking out time for us over the last several months. Can't thank you enough for your guidance and Mr. Kennedy for your leadership. Um, and this, I mean, your whole team has bought into this process and pushed it forward, and truly it would not be moving forward without all the work that you guys have put in. So, thank you so much. This was incredibly thorough and just super exciting for the district.
Well, thank you. And, um, my own personal thanks to Cindy and her team out of Council West Side Schools and, um, my personal appreciation to, uh, all the staff work that's gone in through, to, into this. So, so thank y'all.
Yeah, and I just want to, I just want to say it's been my pleasure to support all of you and to, and, um, will be my pleasure to continue supporting you. And, uh, the staff did have all of those robust and very thorough conversations and, um, have just really, really come together. And Anita was absolutely right. It, it is, this work is a challenge to the way, um, folks are used to thinking, and that's, and that's the beauty of it. And these are aggressive goals. They are aggressive interim goals and interim guardrails. But, um, you know, the, the energy that this team has around, uh, around, um, making that reality match the vision is very inspiring. So, just wanted to mention that, that to you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.